Now, following this meeting, the planning board order. At this time, I'd like to recognize their group of planning director.
Actually, if you'd like to go through a minute of people first, you can do that first.
I make a motion to approve it.
Second. Uh, it's been moved in second, any further discussion? If not, I'll have to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, there. Okay, well, um, just to start the evening, a couple of housekeeping business events. Um, first, I want to welcome another new member of the board. My name, you came on board with us last year. Um, and to start from the year, we have a brand new member just appointed last week, uh, Philip Grace Steele's vacant seat. Uh, Olga Bruman, who is a player with the city of, or Towne, like, I'm forgetting. Towne, like, still. Um, I happen to know Olga, uh, works for Elizabeth Teague, who, uh, Dwayne and, uh, George will remember was my predecessor here at Fletcher. So, um, just wanted to say welcome to Olga. And Olga's, uh, got an extensive planning background. Um, she did her bachelor's and master's degree, I believe, at Western Carolina. And, um, we're not careful, I think she may know more than me on some of this stuff, so, um, she's a great asset, so, um, anyway, only if George can't, every time they're all good, but to say a word, not to put you in the spot, so, so, welcome.
Thank you. We look forward to working with you all. We're excited. Yeah. Thank you.
I think maybe the board should introduce themselves, or she would get a name.
Absolutely.
And will it start from the end?
I bless the cordless.
James Burman.
Joe Tandy.
George Clayton.
Dwayne Gentle.
Lee Bowser.
Jeff Rupp.
Sometimes it's easier if you can connect. I know it's hard for me to remember things, but if I got something like a face, I feel that it's easy. But, uh, anyway, welcome to the board, and thank you for your, um, consideration of volunteering for the town, and so...
Definitely, um, something commendable, that we appreciate the people that do this. We really do, it's something that has to be done, and we've got some fine people here. Welcome to the board. And then you get to vote here real soon, so hang on tight.
All right, Eric. Okay. Um, uh, also under number two, um, it's, uh, well, money, we all worked here last January, I believe, but every January, or first meeting of the year, we do need to elect, uh, both chairman and vice chair positions for both the planning board function and the zoning board function. Um, currently, it's, uh, planning board, we know George Plaguing Chair, Joe Tandy Vice Chair. Um, the zoning board of adjustments, which is, uh, rarely meets, um, although we do have a potential pending case coming in a month or two. But current chair of the ZDA functions is Joe Tandy, and our vice chair was Grace Steele. So, um, with that being said, I'll turn it over. What I'd suggest is, you know, maybe talk about zoning board adjustment first. Um, just to remind you about the zoning board functions, 'cause I just want to make sure I'm clear that everybody's still good with this, is the ZDA operates a little bit different. Um, in a ZDA case, not all eight of you sit, it's six members that sit. Um, and currently, we have two alternates, George and I believe it's James. James, you were, you two are the alternates for the zoning board functions and would only sit, we're lacking a quorum. Um, so, if you're happy with keeping that arrangement on alternates for the ZDA functions, and that would be the chair, vice chair would be selected from the other six tonight.
Um, the alternates are not voted on, it's just that you have a consensus.
That was what we did.
If, if somebody doesn't want to be an alternate, then they have somebody that... I'm satisfied with being an alternate, so, you know, if anybody else has a problem, I don't have a problem with it. You do know, now you sell two boards here, actually, the ZDA and planning board. And, uh, I guess the first thing we need to do is, uh, uh, take nominations for the chair of the ZDA, and that's one that Joe's going now. And, um, I will, I'll take nominations now, if anybody has any.
I'm Joe.
All right. Uh, is, are there any other nominations before we vote? If not, a nomination's been made for, uh, Joe Tandy as a second.
Second.
There's, it's been moved in second. Uh, all in favor as, for Joe as the ZDA chairman, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Get to where they had again, Joe. Something I want to say, I want to recognize Nancy Price. Uh, she, she was actually on the planning board before me, and that, uh, in itself is amazing. But she remembers, I'm sure you remember Elizabeth, and, and Elizabeth Teague was such an, uh, asset of the town, but anyway, I didn't, I forgot to recognize Nancy. She, she was on the planning board and a big help to me in the beginning. I was green when she, she was on the board. Anyway, uh, let's move forward with the vice chair of the ZDA, and we'll take nominations now.
Don't be shy, it's been a while since we've had a chance.
I've been asked a lot too.
Sure.
So, I nominated Jeff Rupp. All right. Uh, I didn't talk to him in advance. Well, if you did, it's okay, you can do that if you want to, that way it won't be any fist fight second word. Um, are there any other nominations? If not, uh, is there a second for that nomination?
I can say it.
It's been moved in second, um, for Jeff, is that, is that right, Jeff? Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The most carries. So, the ZDA is taken care of, and the alternates will remain the same, is that true?
That's, that sounds good.
All right, uh, we'll move next to the planning board. Um, I'll set nominations for the chair at this point.
I'll nominate for Joe.
All right. It's, uh, it's been moved in second, any other nominations? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The most carries. You wait.
It's the, unless it's the second.
All right, uh, the next position is the vice chair of the planning board, I'll take nominations for them. If nobody jumps up, I'm gonna nominate Joe, I'm sure I can, but... I, 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 I appreciate the support Joe's done, and I'm satisfied that he's going to continue to do that, but, uh, any other, other nominations? If not, is there a second for Joe?
I have a second.
I've forgotten several, we've had a second and a third for Joe. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The most carries, Joe, who's now the vice chair of the planning board, and I want to thank you, Paula, before, uh, the confidence in allowing me to do this. And I still, uh, I'm doing, I've been doing almost twenty-nine years, and I'm still learning, so it's, uh, uh, it's really good to have your confidence in me. Thank you so much. Do you have anything you want to say, uh, Joe?
I'll wait, I'll do it very good.
Yeah, I appreciate you being there for me, you've had it California a couple of times, and I really do, uh...
Just to work too, assuming eventually when we do get that item, I'm expecting for Mary's request, um, I'll be in touch with Joe to go over, kind of refresh us both on ZDA procedures, because we just don't enter that function too often.
Yeah, I was gonna say that.
But, um, but then I'll keep you posted, maybe email on the agenda, is it, is it presented to us?
All right, uh, is that everything on that?
Excellent.
All right, the next item on the agenda is CZ number forty-three three dash oh-one, discussion and possible recommendation to town council regarding conditional zoning application at forty-nine Overton Place, pin number nine-six-five-three-dash-six-two-dash-four-five-two-eight, and a request to conditionally reszone the property from C-one to R-two in order to establish a four-lot campground. At this time, I'd love to recognize our approval.
Thank you, George. Um, I realize I made the agenda item almost as long as my staff report, sorry about that, so, um, this item, as George mentioned, uh, is, is in order of forty-nine Overton Place. Uh, we received the conditional zoning application from, uh, Jacque and Julia Fogle, uh, the current owners of the property. Um, I have included in your packet, um, a, a number of materials, I'm just gonna kind of skim and order. I had, I included some supplemental notes, and I'll kind of re-schedule just a moment. Um, a, a letter from the applicant, and I'll also, as soon as I get the overview, I'll let it just drop casually in case they want to add anything to what I say, or if they're prepared to answer, or prepared to answer any questions that you might have for them. Um, I included a letter that I wrote them back in twenty-twelve, that I'll get to in just a moment. Um, you'll see the application, um, an aerial view of the current property, just showing how it sits, and the four lots in question tonight, as they're part of this application, are the four lots at the back, or I guess you could say the western, uh, property boundary that are labeled as, as the one sixteen through one thirty-six, just for your reference. Um, they included some site sketches for us, and that I worked, uh, with them, and I was getting ready to submit to us. Um, basically, this request to us came about, um, I got a call from Jacque, I guess back there in the summer. Um, there is a long existing four-lot mobile home park on this property, um, which obviously for the C-one zoning district was a legally non-conforming use, the property's not, you know, if it was raw, make it land today, it would have been permitted as a mobile home park. Uh, but it has been a long grandfathered legally non-conforming use on the property. Um, the applicant came in with a request to, um, get rid of the mobile homes essentially, and instead of mobile homes on those four lots, to place or have periodic RVs and campers come in, more or less like a, a very small campground function on those lots, instead of having permanent mobile homes there. Now, um, in twenty-twelve, uh, Fogle's came to me, this was before our ordinance had any language whatsoever in it about RVs and campers. We just really were silent in our ordinance about this use. Um, in twenty-twelve, um, Jacque reminded me, 'cause, you know, I had to be reminded that, um, that I had actually written a letter saying that we had no problem with that happening on one of the lots, because at the time, he came to me and said, we, you know, pulling out this mobile home, would like to see, like, there was someone, I think you had, kind of, just being an RV on one of these lots. So, absent any language in our code at the time, I basically wrote a quick interpretation letter saying that we had no problem with it. Fast forward to around, I think it was twenty-sixteen or twenty-seventeen, um, we amended our land development code to include language about, uh, RVs and campers that, that basically specified that outside of an approved campground, um, you couldn't really occupy RVs and campers on the site. So, and obviously, at that time, four years later, there was no cross-referencing with Mr. Fogle's case at the time, so it's just, you know, all these years later now, he came to me thinking that it was just gonna be, um, able to do this on the other three lots, and I had to kind of pump a brace and say, whoever, our code has changed. So that's what's led to the request tonight. It would take a conditional zoning to a zoning district that would allow for a campground. So while I can stand here and agree, it's not really that much of a change in the intensity of the use or whatnot, it was a, it would be a change of use, and our code is very clear about not allowing one non-conforming use to change to another non-conforming use. Um, so that's the basis for the, the request tonight. And I have, you know, there would be very little change to the site if this was approved, and you guys are just ultimately making recommendations and counsel on this. Um, one of the factors, and this is where I get to my supplemental notes, um, with, with the approval of any conditional zoning district, um, this is a bit of a quandary, it's like there needs to be a planning consistency statement that shows how approval of that conditional zoning district is consistent with your plan. Um, I don't have a good way to stand here and tell you that a campground would necessarily be consistent with our land use plan that set the basis for our zoning. Now, you can go in the land use plan, and you're probably not gonna find anything that speaks to the specifics of a campground, but, you know, we obviously zoned the highway twenty-five toward C-one, and knowing that eventually it's gonna be, you know, developed commercially, um, a campground is technically a commercial development, but I don't know that campgrounds would be consistent with the C-one zoning district, because the current zoning would allow them in R-two, and that's the zoning district that, that the Fogle's are needing to seek in order to be able to do a campground there.
Uh, in our definitions, I hate to interrupt your flow, but, uh, it, it occurred to me that in our definitions, do we differentiate between a travel trailer and a mobile home?
We, uh, good question. We have definitions that differentiate mobile home park from campgrounds.
Well, if it's not considered a mobile home park, I mean, that, that, getting the definitions, what is a mobile home park? And just because you've got four sites, don't really make it a park.
It really, well, it, it, again, it's like absent, you know, I mean, it's really, uh, it's, I think, I go way back to a conversation years ago with Nancy, probably, what we're trying to sort out, I think was referred to as dog with mobile home park, so it was...
It was, it was labeled that.
Labeled, right. Um, and, and absent a subdivision that makes it a little residential subdivision, the four units on the lot technically makes it a little park. So, I agree, there's some very, there's some semantics here that seem like we're splitting hairs, that's just by the book, I had to bring this as a conditional zone. I talked, as I was brainstorming with them about this, um, you know, we brought up the idea of what could be an appeal to the interpretation, but i- in examining the ordinance, it's like changing from one non-conforming use to another non-conforming use is, is prohibited. And since campground and mobile home park are two separately broken out uses, you can't say that, well, a campground in this form would be just like a mobile home park, so...
Is there anything that requires it to be labeled a campground? And that, I mean, what you call it...
Well, you then start getting this, in some nuances of the way RVs, and I'm glad Teresa handed me something a while ago that I was looking over about RVs and whatnot, is RVs are not mobile homes, you know, it's like they're vehicles, so they don't meet a HUD code that, you can't go to the Henderson County Building Department and get a building permit for an RV, in other words. So it is a, you know, transitory vehicle that comes and goes, they're not intended by building code to be permanently lived in. Our ordinance clearly states that you can't occupy a camper or RV permanently unless it's in an approved campground. And that's some of the language that we said, amended in the ordinance, um, a few years ago, when we were getting, and we're actually gonna come back to a different angle of this part of the ordinance later on tonight. I don't know if that answered your question.
Yeah, it's just, to me, it, it's, it's not even splitting hairs, it is so, to me, if I was on the other side of the fence, I'd say, well, you know, what is the difference between a travel trailer and, and a, and a mobile home? And where does a motor home fall into the category of, if it's sitting on the site, it has to be considered a campground? The definitions to me...
And I think, I think it comes down to the transitory nature. A mobile home is gonna get a permit, it's gonna sit for a number of years in a mobile home park, and somebody's gonna live in it. The nature, what was described to me was like, like something along the lines of short-term rental, where someone pulls in a camper or an RV, stays on the lot for some duration of time, and then leaves, um, driving the vehicle.
Yeah, my question is, could it be considered without being campground? Could it be considered, you, you've got sites for motor homes, but they're not camping, they're just, they want to stay overnight, it's not, it's not a campground, they don't have fires in the yard, they don't have a, a light...
Unfortunately, there's no other use in the ordinance that I can find that I would classify as...
Yeah, and that's, that's, that's my quandary, I, I can't...
And, uh, one thing that, you know, comes to mind too, again, there's, while there's not a lot of site change that would happen with it, um, one thing that I talked about with was, you know, they've got a very steep, sharp driveway, like if you're approaching from the north, and you're in an RV...
I look at it, in my mind, there's no way a motor home would attempt that, they might be able to do it, but I wouldn't touch mine, you know?
So, one thing that, again, and this'll be something I'll ultimately speak to council about, as they, you know, get into the public hearing aspect of it, is that one condition that may need to be tagged to this if it does get approved, is that we're gonna need to see that DOT is okay with the current driveway, 'cause then, and I spoke before...
Actually, there's two, there's two. The other one, you can only get in from the southbound, my guess, and the other one is better served from the north, but it's like, well, that's a high-fa, you know, it's almost vertical, but, um...
Well, they, um, we, we kinda got into the questions early, so...
Yeah, and I, I'm sorry to, to interrupt, but it, it, to me, it just, i- if, just, um, for a second argument, i- if we make the recommendation, there's no way to do it without calling it a campground, because to me, it's, it will never be anything to compare to Rupple's, I mean, they got, they got so many amenities, and they got so many things going on, and, you know, it's, to me, it wouldn't be a campground, it just wouldn't, and, and what else is, or what other, is there any other angle?
That, that would be a question I would ask, like, you know, what would be called, so, again, I don't have another use to categorize this. In our ordinance, in article four, it's into the specific section about RVs and campers, saying that outside of approved campground, you cannot occupy, um, an RV, um, except for a couple of circumstances, like if it's like one RV, you know, like an RV coming, and it's, you know, family coming, and staying in your driveway there. This is getting into some of the discussion we have later, enough to do it right now, and then there's also the, the caveat, it lets you stay in a camper on your vacant land if you're under an active permit to be building your, building a new house on, so you can live on your land while you're building a house. So, there's no other language in the ordinance that deals with RVs and campers other than...
A campground that label it a campground, and to me, that's where I struggle. I, I, if somebody has that kind of facility that was mobile homes prior, and they put, um, motor homes in, in that place, I, to me, it's, it's bizarre to have to call it a campground, you know, it's not, it's not a campground, but it's a better, um, use of the property, but it's not a campground, and I, I don't feel comfortable even suggesting that it would be, 'cause it's, it, you've got no amenities. I mean, it's like, that campground, Rupple's, they're prepared to have people kind of walk across a lake, and kids running around, and having a big time with the ducks and all that stuff, but, ooh, that's not what they're wanting, they're not really expecting to have a campground, so it's, to me, I, I struggle with, with the definition side.
Let me get back into my notes, and then I'll, I'll break up the applicants, and then we can get into more questions, so, um, again, uh, I think we touched on most of what my first page of notes said. Where it gets into the specific criteria on that second page of my notes, talking about the, where I cut and paste from the, the section on, given on special use permits, which also applies on conditional zoning. When, when it gets in front of council, and, I mean, you guys should factor all these into, the specific criteria talks about, you know, the satisfactory ingress and egress, that could get into what I was talking about with, with driveway permitting, where we would want to make sure that they can touch base with DOT if they're approved for the zoning, just to make sure that they get approval from DOT on their driveway permitting. Um, you know, most of these other criteria would be, you know, either not applicable or easily met provision of off-street parking and loading areas or required adequate utilities, which would not be an issue buffering. Um, there's a lot of existing vegetation on the land now, and their sites get showed if, as, as I guided them, there would be adding some additional landscape buffering. Um, signs not really applicable for right now, playgrounds, open spaces, yards wouldn't really be applicable in this situation. Um, again, we're not talking about any great redevelopment of the property, it's just sort of changing the use. And then, um, like I said, the site sketches in there, and I know we've kind of dug into this a little bit already, but, um, I can introduce, shortly, just to see how much to start with, and then we'll jump back into questions. Thank you, Eric.
Good evening, thank you for listening to our request. Uh, I'm Jacque, Mr. Julia. And, uh, we've been the owners of the property since, uh, two thousand and five, and, um, as you know, Nancy lives behind us. Um, we've operated the park, um, and we also live there, and, um, we've operated the property as a mobile home park since two thousand and five. And the lots are currently vacant. You know, requesting conditional zoning. What we're looking to do, I mean, we have a little full hookups, we have a thirty and fifty amp for electricity, we have, um, city water, we have, um, one septic tank for each two lots. Um, and like I said, it's been operated as a mobile home park for, you know, the Wachtel family owned it before us, it's probably been, um, forty, fifty years. Um, so mobile homes have come in and gone out for years, and they will come from the south, south end, which is a less steep driveway. Um, we're looking to, to rent it a, um, basically, um, seasonal, probably from March, April through October, November, and close it down in the winter. And we're considering, um, um, age restrictions, for like fifty-five and over. It's a very comfortable piece of property, people can walk, they can use Fletcher Park. Um, the type of, type of guests that we'll have will be, uh, probably wealthier types of people to come in and support the community, go to restaurants, um, spend money in Fletcher.
I have a question, I hate to interrupt, but, um, if you have fifty-five and over, that was a concern of mine, 'cause if the children come, there's not, nothing point to do with...
Yeah, it would have to go to Fletcher Park.
Yeah, they would have to commute, and with the fact that they're going to stay there, they will bring a second vehicle, so they'll be pulling something that'll make that driveway a little bit tighter, even with a vehicle behind it, it's gonna be. Um, and that is my biggest concern, beyond definitions, is the fact that the ingress and egress is safe, and, and the fact that somebody going south, there's no way they can make that turn back, and there'll have to be some improvement on the north road to accommodate, um, motor home pools, I mean, you have one septic, oh, that's probably...
Because that's one that we thought, we thought about that, I guess when we decided we planned this, we want, we need one that down the road in the future that comes in, we tell them to approach only from the south, because they can't with that turn. We have had, like you said, the, the larger treas would come out, mobile homes, and it is tight, but we want to have rules in place if it gets approved, you know, only approach from the south, because they can't make that turn.
And, and, and the depth of each lot, I mean, we have, like, forty, forty-five...
Yeah, there's room, there's like sixty, I mean, we've had mobile homes there, so there is a sixty-foot, but we don't want it, it's, they're like two...
Yeah, so, so, if you like a fifth, a fifth wheel, it'd be somewhere between twenty and twenty-eight feet, and, and, and of course...
You have room for a fifth wheel, like I said, there's as much as thirty-five, my brother's got thirty-five fifth wheel, and it takes, uh, it takes forty acres to about the turn there.
To about, yeah, I think that's, we've also thought with the lots, and what type of RV, the large lots up here probably could do the larger, the smaller, and if one's down, we probably would have a smaller RV.
So you're not exclusive to motor home here?
No.
Including also the fifth wheels and travel trailers, and the, the short ones?
But we would explain, like, that we would show them the lots, we want people there that know how to drive, because I know there's some of these new RVs, but, yeah, but we want to show them the lot, that it's a back-end lot, and we want, and also, we've thought about not just having, uh, daily rentals, we'd either like to do maybe weekly, or people doing monthly or for the season, which I think would probably get that interest, 'cause a lot of people want to be here for that time of year, so, so it's not in and out, we don't want people to come in and out, it's not that busy coming in, does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, did you have any additional, uh...
No, they, I mean, the, the width of each spot... No, they, I mean, the width of each spot, I think was about thirty, twenty, twenty to thirty feet wide, and about forty or fifty feet deep. The, the lots on, on the north side, the three to the north, are the ones that'll be easier for the RVs to back up into. We don't have any pull through, so there's no, you know, people will have to be able to back up, and we'll provide instructions, and there's, there's websites and schedule company, software companies that we've been in communication with in order to advertise and market and schedule.
Which we have, sorry.
And, and they request diagrams in order to actually, you know, for access and exit points to the lots.
Well, it's certainly comforting to know that you won't have to provide recreation for children, and there is a different market for what we're talking about, in many respects. Some people just wanna place the park overnight, they won't go to Wal-Mart, if that's what they're looking for, but I do see an issue with requiring them to go south and turn around, that they're coming from the north, they'll have to turn around, and I know it's an expense, but it would be so much easier if you would agree as a condition to make that north road accessible, so that, and I'm, I'm not saying that council may look at it different, but that was my whole point from the beginning when I saw this, is, can these people get in and out of there without causing a train wreck?
And George, I would, I would add to that interjecting, sorry to interrupt, but just, we would, it could be possible to talk about adding that north as a, as a, as a condition, but again, it would need to be under the umbrella of them approaching DOT's local division office to find out.
And we'll see if it would even permit.
Whether, whether they would want the two driveways side by side, or how far apart, or the width of driveway.
It's already touched there, it's actually a usable driveway.
It's, it's a usable driveway, except that it's shared, you know, the doctor, Dr. Kim owns part of that driveway.
Yeah.
The north, the north side. I pull a trailer, you know, when I do landscaping work, and I own the south to exit, and, and, and just to reiterate, mobile homes have been driven in and out of there for forty years. We take care of all the trees, we take care of, you know, the road, you know, we make sure that it's safe, we live on the property, so if there's any issues, we're there to help, so it's not like we're absentee, you know, language.
Right, and, and that, that's also a plus, because you're on site, that there are times that deal works.
Yeah, and, and so we're there to communicate with the people and help in any way possible. We wouldn't, we wouldn't do it if it was gonna be too difficult.
Sure.
We're all older.
Another thing to interject too, and I would encourage Josh to speak to when you and I, when we all first spoke, you spoke about, I guess, dealing with, with long-term tenants versus the short-term type situation.
Yeah, we've had, we've had a lot of issues over the years with longer term mobile home tanks. A lot of the issues were, you know, some were very positive, some were negative. One family, young family, attempted to start a med lab, and we've had the SBA there, and we live there, you know, and we've had people in and out, in and out, so we wanna get away from that, you know, to give us peace of mind, the community peace of mind as well.
Yeah, this is certainly an unusual situation. To me, in a perfect world, I would say, you pull out a motorhome, you can put a motorhome in, but it's the same setup, but it's not, it's not the same in our definitions and ordinance and interpretation usage, but I'm gonna let the board ask a question, I'm sure they all have questions, anybody just jump in?
Yeah, so you, you live at forty-nine?
Yes, sir.
And then, there's another residence at sixty-five?
We own that as well.
Okay, so you have both of those?
Yes.
Houses there. You had mentioned about being a shared driveway, I don't understand that.
On the, on the north side, that there's a right way for the doctors, I mean, they don't, they don't use it. Dr. Kim has race oncology as the name of the business.
He owns that property, so.
They have a super distance for size, there's a vision on the.
That's the thirty-one fifty-nine entrance?
I believe so. Yeah, so the main entrance is, you know, I guess on, it's sixty ninety-eight, but then we have, we're forty-nine, we live in the house door forty-nine, and then the entrance is forty-nine, and the next door is sixty-five, and then, but the north side entranceway is, Dr. Kim owns, it's, it's a strange cut, you know, it's kinda towards the bottom, it's, it kinda comes in at an angle.
Yeah, the base of that driveway is pin on the south, and he does, he doesn't use it, but he does on that property.
Sure. We would have, they're probably to move it over, obviously a much bigger project.
Which I have contacted, yeah, there is, in the middle of the property, there is, it looks like what they, something they plan on, but they said they don't, they like it.
Yeah, you can barely see it, and if you get on the computer, and actually, you can go up, uh, over to, and see all mine, I actually went up your driveway.
Are you, the SUV?
Took, took, no, I was enough to see, if I could see that other road coming off of it, and I didn't notice, you can't.
Just to keep people, sometimes people like to drive up in there, especially if there's no one back there, we don't want people back there, so we kind of put a gate block.
But for some reason, when they came up, did GPS or GPS, I don't know what it is, they, they let the stay on the highway, or they came up, you driveway, and said that they rode in, and then went all the way up in there, so, see you got to the Kim car, and then stopped, I couldn't go any further, but at least he gave me an eyeball, and I certainly didn't wanna come up there uninvited and see what was going on.
Forty-one, you opened the car.
People can do it online, I didn't know if you were aware, that's, you can get online and come up your driveway.
But it's crazy, I know.
But I did look at it, and it's a, a perfect world, I, I love that too, you know, so that coming, you wouldn't have to put in your advertisement, south entrance only, you know, or whatever you're going to put, because people got to know before they get there.
Well, see, we often, I mean, to that point, we thought too, like, there'd be a certain time when people would come, if we had a lot vacant, when they would come in, and at a different time that people could leave. And I do a lot, when I look at other campgrounds, they kinda have the same thing, where to check out, there's a certain time, if you don't, you don't want them meeting on that road, I think it's, because a lot of the camp, and just in Revard, those campgrounds, it's very difficult to meet someone.
Yeah, like, you gotta be at five eleven, and you could get in, or you give four hour windows, so that.
We need to have, we would have that in place. Plus, I, again, we don't wanna have this daily lot, we wanna do a weekly or a monthly, so we don't have that in an hour.
Certainly, it would be like this campground.
No, it wouldn't be, because I think that, that's a very basic campground.
Oh, certainly, and some of the people that come over there, I'm not, the tourists, but, for some of the worst drivers I've ever encountered, in their own road, which is dangerous.
Yes, yes.
Oh, god, unbelievable, the people that have motorhomes.
They have, but then they have so many lots, there's a lot of.
Yeah, there's a lot of traffic.
I mean, I recently had a gentleman, that he pulled his RV into, into the lot, into the one lot that's been approved by, by Eric, and no issues, he enjoyed himself, spent three months, and it got cold, and he didn't wanna stay the rest of the winter.
So, will you all, will you be officially closing in the cold months?
Yes.
Will it be an official deal, so you don't have to worry about plumbing, and you don't have to, like, sort of around.
And we have, we have, we have cutoff switches for water at every spot, plus we have a main cutoff switch for water at the back. We have fifty and thirty amp electricity hookup, and we have the septic tank hookup for each lot.
Sure, and that, to me, two for two is overkill. I think you could probably get more than two on the tank, but I, I don't, but that's really good.
Especially, they, all RVs don't normally have like washer drivers.
Right.
There's a lot of things in RV is less taxing, than if you have a mobile home, you've got more people, more water.
Constant water use.
There's a lot more things.
Did you have a question?
Twelve hundred gallon septic tanks.
They're large, they're very large, they're.
I can get to the, they're, 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 they're older, and they're from, they're from back when the lock was set.
There was no problem with that?
No, and then we service them with triple A every two years, so we don't, we don't wanna get any risks, we, we watch it very closely, and then we, we set it up so that we have the covers on top of the ground, so it's very easy to access and monitor.
No D.
No D.
No Pro V.
No Pro V.
No Pro V.
Maybe a filter.
Any other questions?
Did you say that there's no, there are no mobile homes on the four lots at this point?
No mobile homes, I asked everyone to leave last, last year.
I was out there this afternoon and got as far as getting, I don't need to get out, I can see them here, or what this is all about. Yeah, I, I do see that if it's required that you make changes to the north entrance egress, egress, that is a considerable project, because that is so steep, you're gonna have to do the backhoe and dump truck and remove a lot of dirt to kinda flatten that out, so nonetheless, you do have the south, and I don't see any problem with telling your people in advance, approach from the south, they can go round the block, whatever, that's gonna be a piece of cheese, where's the kick?
Yeah, it's, to me, it wouldn't be a deal breaker if I wanted to stay there, but if I didn't get notification prior, I would probably caged right, I think I said, coming from the north, because that's impossible, okay, there'd be, unless you get in a mineral lane on the road, and you've got three lanes to make a turn, but that's hazardous, yeah, and I won't tell you, and it's my concern, that's the, the safety, but any other questions from the board? Did you have anything you wanted to add, Eric?
No, no, I'm gonna thank you, I just wanted to assure you that we'll communicate with all the prospective guests, and make sure that they're aware of how to enter the property and exit the property, make it, we want, we want them to enjoy, so we, we don't want them to have difficulty.
They might be able to leave on the north entrance, if you go a little faster than the.
If we don't like them, they can go that way.
Yeah, send like northwards, yeah, that's dangerous.
Now, how do you plan, how do you plan, like, on marketing?
There's a company, I've done a lot of research, and the company that I'm gonna use is a company called Rover Pass, and they specialize, there's company, software companies that specialize in marketing, and scheduling, so that you're not overlapping.
Is it, is it kinda like Airbnb, but for RV?
Yes, similar, actually, Rupp's Park uses them as well, and many other RV parks. Camp, Camp, Camping World also has, I think it's called, I forgot.
Sam's.
Yeah, Sam, Sam's, Sam's, something like that, but Rover Pass will help us advertise on all the other RV sites, and drive the traffic to us.
And they're, they're very detailed, like, they wanna know the site plan, and they even want.
We have to put a map on the site.
Because they want their, you know, clients to come in, feel very comfortable, and they come in, know what they're getting into before they get there.
Yeah, they, they, they're compensated for, for more traffic as well, so, you know, they want, they want to make sure that our business is working well for them, and that's mutually beneficial.
And I'll make sure that I don't have a lot of party, my house is pretty close.
Yeah, she's right behind it.
She'll be out there directing traffic, so they don't stop her.
Unless Nancy's invited.
She's, she's been an asset to the panel, and I, I would, I feel like if Nancy goes along with them, so.
Where, where, where does Nancy live?
Right behind it.
Is that the one forty-six?
Behind it, right there.
She lives on the west.
Right, about one forty-six.
So, we have.
She gets a direct.
Yeah. We have about three point six acres, and then we have about four point seven five for highlights.
And that's always consideration, how the neighbors, and I know it's, one of the things, one of the outbuilds is right on the fence, and it's grandfather certainly, but that was a setback, and if the neighbor complains, they can make you move your build, but, but, but that's one of the deals.
One, one question, maybe for Eric, so, again, I'm learning all the lingo, but has there, is there any precedent for this kind of a situation?
As small as we are, we very rarely have precedents, for, there's something new every year, it seems like, you know, we don't have a precedent I can think of for this specific case, and again, you know, in a strictly by the book, you know, when you're sitting in the workshops at the school of government or whatever, you know, it's like, it's very hard to wrap my brain around how you write a plan consistency statement for approval on this, yet, you know, as I wrestle with it in my own brain, I recognize that the impact of the use is so similar, that it's almost not a change of use, except by our code.
Right, by definition, yeah, that's, that's the argument, because to me, it's a better use, certainly because you don't have to get rid of the tenants that come in, but if it's a day to day, or a week, a weekend, if it's not something, you, you can send them packing, and then not let them come back, but once you're committed to, I don't know how hard it is to get rid of tenants, especially some that you, it's, it's almost like Congress coming, trying to get rid of these folks, but, so what bothers me is the fact it's gotta be called a campground, I just wish there was another approach to this.
Yeah, and again, there's, it's in the very general, in the general requirements that are part two of my supplemental notes, you know, there's, there's this kinda, I often laugh and call it the catch-all, it's, it's, it's statement in the ordinance, it says, approval may be granted if the town council finds that in the particular case in question, the use for which the special use permit, or in this case, the conditional dwelling is sought, will not adversely affect the health or safety of persons residing working in the neighborhood, and will not be detrimental to public welfare or injurious to property or public improvements in the neighborhood. In granting such approval, the town council may designate such conditions in connection therewith as well, in its opinion, and show that the proposed use will conform to the requirements in spirit of the code. So, if this gets its way through council and is approved by them, the order that I would draft granting the approval for this would probably be rooted largely in that broad category.
Right, I read that, and I, when I read that, first thing I thought about was the safety on twenty-five, there, there is a motorhome going in and out, but sometimes there, good drivers, sometimes they can take a few lessons, but then it occurred to me, I said, boy, Nancy would like to use her driver, and play it up her fixway again, and I'm not suggesting that, but that would, that would solve a whole lot of problems. It would, it would end the issue I had about safety on twenty-five, but, you know, that's.
But there's also the, excuse me, you know, there's the turning lane, and we'll, we're gonna take pictures, and we'll make sure that people go into the turning lane in order to turn on.
And they will be stopped in turn, as opposed to being in a moving, right, they make that right north turn.
But that's all I, that's all I endeavor.
And that's probably a, a, a good selling point, is there's no entrance from the north, and the fact that they will be sitting still before they turn across two lanes of traffic, and it's angled from the south, and it's amazing, that was my biggest concern, that the safety issue coming in and out of twenty-five, is there any other question?
I was just gonna throw out there, because we're going from a non-conforming to a non-conforming, you're going to a lesser impact from a mobile home park to a campground, because I usually do property management, mobile home park to a monster. So, what you're gonna do is gonna have less impact to the area, especially if you stay at fifty-five and over, so you're gonna keep all, a lot of the issues that come with that, they won't exist, but because of the fifty-five and over, other than grandkids every now and again. But, but I understand what you're saying about the motorhome that's coming in from the south, and all the, the traffic that I see out here, it shouldn't be that much an issue if it's marketed that they're coming in the south.
The, the other question though would be, I mean, I know, I mean, this situation, you guys, I mean, you live there, and you're, you're, you don't want trouble, you know, bringing trouble on. you know, bringing trouble onto, onto those four sites, but what happens 10 years, 20 years down the road when that property maybe turns over, somebody else comes in and now?
That's transferable, conditional uses, though.
Well, one thing I would say is that if that is on a conditional zoning like this, which is again, when the use that's approved under conditional zoning ceases, which, you know, the FOGALs and I have discussed how, you know, inevitably this property, you could imagine market forces will drive it towards commercial. When a, when a conditional, a use under, for, under conditional zoning ceases, it would revert back to C1 zoning. So, you know, we would basically, the, the, the conditional zoning would essentially become null and void, and then it would, it could revert back to C1 zoning.
Not necessarily, if somebody came in and bought it, though, would it, it's, I thought the property, the zoning would.
Yes, now, if, if the FOGAL sold it to someone that was gonna just take it over and do management, then it could, the use could continue. That's where the horns of conditional zoning comes into play, and not an outright rezoning, it's because you tie it to the specifics, so that they don't come back later and say, hey, we're making a lot of money with this, we wanna do 20 lots now, or, you know.
But if somebody buys it and continues to run it that way, but they change the, the, the business model in the sense that you got people coming in and out, one, every day or something like that, would that be possible with the zoning?
It would be very tricky to dictate, just like with where we took no action some years ago about short-term rentals for houses. It would be very tricky to regulate length of stay on something like this, we just wouldn't.
Yeah, you couldn't.
You know, but is it also? Which is why, sorry, which is why I would say we would want to make sure that the DOT reviewed their driveway, like, you know, it would just be like any other commercial development, if they're building a campground, to say, hey, this has historically been a residential use, it's changing to a campground, it's gonna have a little bit more in and out traffic. And they would need to either go get new driveway permits from DOT and go through that review to see if any improvements to the driveways are required by DOT. And if not, then DOT could write some letter, or write an email to us that we would stick in the file and say they didn't require any improvements.
So are they gonna have to go to the DOT on this?
Well, I, I would think so, because just the, the nature of the traffic coming and going, because I'm not assuming that it's weekly or monthly rental, I'm assuming, I mean, you know, I have to assume that it could be.
We can't assume, we have to take it on the positive extremes, and make sure we approach it and.
So I would be.
What bothers me is the fact that we can't put one of the conditions on this as being 55-year-olds.
Yeah.
And it's what they promise, and I take their word and I believe them. But if, if somebody else came and said, well, you know, I don't like kids being here, that's like, no, it's a headache, it's a problem.
I think, I don't remember, but for whenever we definitely, we do just have to sell the property, I think the next owner would not, because they're gonna, we're gonna try to get, of course, you know, we wanna make as much money as possible, so they're not gonna continue, I would think, with the camp.
Certainly, and to me, there's better uses.
Yeah, that would help us a lot more to develop, but yeah, just for us, because we live there and try to bring in money to help, you know, that's, and to make it easier for us.
So we actually, we'll have to take your order at 55, I know we can put that as one of the.
Well, we, we, we've had, our kids are grown now, and we're just, we know what it's like to have one of the kids, because we've had turnovers with kids, and we just know that it's easier not, I mean, you can't limit, I know you can't say no kids, if, like you said, grandparents, they come visit, but we want to do it in such a way that makes it easier for us to have to manage, because it is a management, we have to manage it well, so.
Certainly.
We don't want kids running all over, because there is, I mean, it's three and a half acres, and I know it's like, kids love to roam, so you just, kind of, it's grown up to have.
Yeah, this is, this is a very unique, very challenging. I'm surprised I haven't heard anything from the whole village.
I'm Ross, I'm still, um, I have a question actually for Eric. So if we, we found this property to conditional, they're sticking a lot of campgrounds there. If they wanna put a couple of more lots there, would they be allowed, or this would only be only tied to four lots?
This would be site-specific, I mean, we, we, historically, our conditional zoning approvals have been tied to the specific site plan, and so anything where they later tried to propose some additional lots, I would view as a significant change to that site plan. We would have to send it back through this process again to, to consider whether or not that was gonna get approved.
Well, product cost owning, the family that owned the product cost had many more lots. That would rent it, and when we purchased it, the way we were told, it was that those were for grandfathered in.
And that had to do with, and I remember way back going through with Nancy, is that, you know, grandfather causes can sunset when a non-conforming use ceases, and so if homes were removed and sat vacant forever, you know, after a long extensive, Nancy remembers, a long extensive, trying to figure, sort through, and we came down to figuring that we could grandfather it still as four units, which is where it is right now.
Yeah, I wouldn't have any problem, I know that's not your choice, but I think the council's confusion with the ordinance and the things that have happened in the past, that we still have that option, if you wanted to go back to mobile homes. That it wouldn't be, it would be grandfathered in, in the time, it wouldn't be 180 days or something. I know that's not your choice, but we became in control of what council does, and may not approve of this, I'd always have to, to take that in, in consideration when you make a decision, it may, may not, but is there any other question, comments, anything y'all?
About dogs, have you, are you, are you ready to do about each of them?
Yeah, I know, it's, it's a challenge, we're gonna, we'll see how it goes, if you wanna say no.
Or we can limit, I think, yes, we're gonna determine size, I think, smaller.
It's just the clean, you know, we have to have, there's other issues with the dog, I don't want the noise, but it's the cleanliness and the hygiene of the area. So, I mean, maybe a small dog, but no, probably not any type of violent, aggressive.
Do a lot of weight, and like your father.
Well, we're not a girl church, you can have two dogs inside a house, before we pack them. We've got the allocation, they're not a dog.
No chain outside.
We love dogs, I mean, we've had, we've had dogs all our lives. But some people treat dogs not the way that we would treat our dogs. And, and they leave their dogs outside, they leave them chained up, they'll take, take off and go, and then, and then we're there trying to help with the hog.
Yeah, the dog, the hog, so we can kinda inspire, we have something that's.
You can't do anything about the bears.
The bears, you come up with an answer, you haven't known the neighbors speak the bears, if I, I see bears, I'll see them every day.
Yeah, we never, in northern Florida, we never had bears, now we have bears all the time, it's crazy.
Yeah, we're talking all the time.
Yeah, that's right, this is, that, another one.
The, the bears really cares from the neighbors' trash a most day.
Yeah.
It's always somebody else's garden, it's not ours. If, if y'all have nothing else, is anything, or have any questions? All right, let someone make a nomination either way on this project. What is your motion? Yeah, motions to approve or disapprove or not to recommend?
Just did, yeah, I was gonna say.
It's got to be a motion to recommend to council, I'd go to recommend approval.
Okay.
All right, it's been moved in second, any further discussion?
Well, just one other question on that, on that DOT issue. So that is automatic if we approve this, or no?
I would be, you know, if I, you know, do a basic tenant permit on the zoning, it's like, I would be typing a note for the permit saying that I, I'd like to see whether, whether or not DOT needs a driveway permit, or if they're saying we're waiving that, we don't need one. I would be encouraging council to add a specific condition that can be written into the approval letter for that, just to kind of add it.
So we don't have to do that here, we can just?
Well, you, you, just one other thing, if it does come down to DOT approval, it does, it can't be a condition that they only have south entrance, south well interest.
Yeah, I weigh 25, being a five-lane major thoroughfare, I don't know that we, I wouldn't feel comfortable, I'd like, I don't know whether we can require stricter measures that DOT is going to, or certainly not less restrictive measures than DOT.
Sort of.
Only question, I, I have a question, I have a question on that.
The only question I have is, you know, I understand the safety concerns, but mobile homes have, you know, I know the frequency will be greater.
Right, that's the issue, I think, is frequency.
But, you know, mobile homes have come in and out for 40 years.
But, but they got a flag, and then people running around stopping traffic, and they got a few sets of mobile homes that come in and disrupt traffic.
And, and, you know, I don't know if all four are gonna be lined up behind one another, but I, I think the normal situation would be one at a time. And like I said, I pull a very long trailer for landscaping, I go right into that middle lane, and I wait, and I wait with no traffic going south, and that's when I turn in.
Yeah, it, it's in the context of a residential use, and I mean, this is just being a change of use going from a residential setting to a more transitory in-and-out situation. It's, it's basically something that we would be tagging as part of the permit, but, and then I'm gonna be bolstered by a condition from council on that. Just to say, it's, it's gotta be an item of due diligence on it, so if DOT required any improvements, then we know that they were gonna be, you know, taken care of.
Okay.
All right, well, it's been moved in second, any further discussion? All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? A motion carries?
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your patience and your helpful consideration there. Good luck, I hope you do well.
I hope you do, thank you, mate, good luck.
Appreciate it. Nancy, Nancy knows where the Crown Hollow is, if you're moving back. All right, you missed out on the agenda, this discussion regarding RVs, campers, as a temporary use, once you get on, probably recognize or.
All right, so this next one is way more informal, I didn't include any materials in your packet, because I didn't wanna.
Thank you.
Well, they're in mine, so they just get it. And it's, it's just ironic, coincidental timing to bring this item up, it's been something I've been wrestling with for a couple of months, and it just happened to coincide with that which you just heard is related to campground use. What I wanted to just check in with you briefly about tonight is kind of the other aspect of our ordinance as it relates to campers and RVs. When we amended the ordinance, I think it was 2017, I'm gonna read you the blurb. It's in our temporary use section in R4, RVs and campers, outside of an approved campground, one recreational vehicle or camper may be permitted on a residential lot without permit, but may not be permanently hooked up to water, sewer, or power. The RV or camper must be properly licensed and registered, and cannot be occupied for a period of more than 30 days up to four times of a calendar year outside of an approved campground. The RV or camper may be either parked in the driveway or at the rear property, and an RV camper may only be located on a vacant lot and occupied where there are active zoning or building permits or construction of significant owner residence. And then there was a sentence added later, the occupancy of mobile tiny homes on wheels shall be regulated in the same manner. So fast forward to today, you know, you put a section in the ordinance, and there's always gonna be odd cases that come about, or odd questions that come about, so as I've been wrestling with this issue over the last few years, and it's becoming more and more predominant, you know, whether it's economic times, inflation, housing crisis, whatnot, we are seeing more people in campers in Mama's backyard, and I think that's happening everywhere, not just here. Some questions that have come up over the years is whether or not, we, we say that it can happen on a residential lot, but our ordinance is silent about a commercial lot, what if there's a storekeeper that's like, got an RV parked out back, that they're wanting to just crash it? Our ordinance is silent about that, and so like on an occasion, and I only had like one instance, you, you talk about precedents, you know, we, we seem to get something new every so often, like this question came up, and the guy said, I keep it out back. We got a complaint from somebody that lived nearby, got a complaint about an RV out back of a commercial lot, and the guy was like, I don't have it hooked up permanently, I, sometimes I work late, I stay in my camper overnight, and there's nothing you can do about it, you know, that kind of thing. And now you look at it, and there's no permanent hookup to it, so it had a license plate, so in that point, I'd say no violation, it's not hooked up permanently to power, or it's not occupied on a full-time basis. Fortunately, that was the end of that one. What we're getting into now more often than not is situations where we're either getting asked, like Teresa had, and there's always a heartbreaking story tied with many of these uses, or these, these situations. What was the one you had where it was daughter getting out of an abusive relationship, going to stay in a camper out back at her daddy's house until she could get on her feet, kind of situation. We've applied the standard, because the ordinance doesn't specify, you know, occupy for a period up to 30 days, no more than four times a year, I think the intent of that is for them not to be consecutive four, 30-day periods, but the ordinance is silent on that, so there have been times I've just interpreted to be like, I don't care if you run your 30-day periods four times in a row, the ordinance is silent about that, I have a feeling that's not.
And it's not gonna be silent after that.
Because once you get dug into a mobile, a camper for 120 days, that's, it's hard to dig them out. Again, fortunately, we're, like, most small towns and often county jurisdictions are often complaint-driven on code enforcement, so you kind of know these situations are out there, but we're not getting complaints about too many of them yet. We're getting a few more here lately, there is one particular one, I'm not gonna name where it is. We've got a situation where there are two campers in somebody's backyard. As I've dug into the situation, because some other circumstances with regard to their stuff they wanted to do, subdivision, and placing another mobile home on the property, it's come to light, there are two campers. Son who is mentally ill, having problems in life, is in the camper out back of Mama's yard. Mama in the house is taking care of that guy's kids. Stepson of her husband, or step, stepson of her husband, her stepson is in the other camper, helping take care of elderly and firm, you know, husband that's in the house. You, you get, you see where I'm going, you get these hard lock hardship scenarios that an ordinance like this can't address. Now, you know, at some point, I recognize you gotta draw the line, but I'm having a real hard time like figuring out how I'm gonna render people homeless, you know, or, you know, so it's like, I think to myself, do you want mentally ill son in the camper in Mama's backyard, or do you want him kicked off and sitting in the back of the truck stop lot down the way? Or, you know, and it's like, there's all these ethical debates in my own mind with it. Now conversely, do I want that next to my property if I'm living next door? Not necessarily, we got a complaint, you know, about this, this similar situation. I'm letting it play out, because I wanna see where things go with the subdivision land and placing another mobile home that might be with one of the campers. But all of this being said, I wanted to find out, there is no precedent that Teresa can find, I have her research, and is there any place out there that does some kind of hardship exemption on this, on this issue for familial situations like this? We can't find anything. If we decide to take, it's the opposite, it's like, there's consistent, you shall not, and we know building code doesn't want a permit not to conceal a camper. Building code's not peeking down the bushes looking for it, you know, otherwise they'd be in some of the campgrounds looking for permanent residents there.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty much nationwide, that you don't let somebody stay in an RV on your property as a permanent use, it's just not a permanent use.
One way you can address that there is to make sure that I let license plate and whatever other.
That's the way we used to delve into it.
And also that they have registered it with the tax office as a, I mean, as a legal vehicle.
Right.
But I definitely do not like the 120 days or whatever it's been, we gotta separate those 30 days, even if it's just for a day, and I don't even like a day, I'd say at least a week between the 30-day and. And I don't even like a day, I'd say at least a week between the thirty day interval. Uh, and I know you have to put it in definitions and in the ordinance to consider that hardship case, but whose interpretation do you consider?
Exactly, and you can see where I'm going, this is why I didn't spin my wheels trying to traffic it forward. What I wanted to get tonight was just a general feeling of, do you all of the board feel like we should pursue some language that could take a hardship consideration into account? And I'm not talking about hardship in a variance, this is not an issue that you could just grant a variance.
Right, like G D A case.
If you could prove it by medical documentation so that you have something to stand on, that's one thing, but just because somebody says I'm having a bad day, and I want my kids to live by me, you gotta say no, all right?
Yeah, it, it would become, and I, and trust me, as I, as I approached tonight, I, I was like banging my head against the wall wondering why make a agreement itself tonight? Because it's, I go back and forth on it. It, it's like, I either want something in the ordinance that gives me a clear cut way to offer a hardship exemption on something like that, or I need some stuff to clarify on the language about breaking up those thirty day periods so that it's truly apparent that it's more temporary in nature, um, to say that those thirty day periods shall not be running consecutively. And, and that question that I mentioned in the beginning about, do we need to say that, you know, including commercial lot, that's, you know, for...
And one question I have, if you consider someone has a hardship case, and you make that a staff, what are your, um, rulings? Who should challenge it, and how is the process? Do they, do they go to the courthouse, or do they challenge a, a, a legal position? Or do they challenge the ordinance and interpretation? It'd be, um, what would be in, in a complaint driven problem would be a neighbor complaint, and then this hardship, then you've got those two bumping heads, and you've got to be in the middle of it. How will you, how will you satisfy either one of them with what we can do here? That, that's, and I definitely want that simple, maybe on the thirty day deal, because it was never the intent to make it consecutive, never, and you know that. Yeah, it was one of those...
Well, that's again, when you're talking about someone getting run, you know, crashing in somebody's backyard because they were in an abusive relationship, that, you know...
And I thought it was to work with our councilman because I told him that we can't through the RV.
We got a question about it from a council person about that scenario too.
Yeah, well, once you involve council, to me, it, it has been pain. Number one, because it is an ultimate decision, even if we make a...
And that's been a few years ago now, so...
They, they can decide what the ordinance is, even if it's something that we would prove.
I see, I see.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I, I'm sure you got it.
Yeah, I don't, I think it's safer to stick with objective standards and just to separate thirty days or make it clear, because at the end of the day, it is an objective standard. We, if we're trying to define hardship, we risk of being pursued as arbitrary or officious. And if somebody is to take us on the interpretation, almost likely the court will side with the landowner.
Yeah.
So because some hardship to you, some hardship to me.
Yeah.
So this is a dangerous territory to create area, so I'll stick with objective standards. No matter how heartbreaking that situation is.
When you put it like that, that's very clear cut. Now, the other question I would have is, we've said, and I've noticed in here, and as I was talking to you, it talks about one recreational vehicle, and here I've got a scenario with two. Are we far past infirmant by wanting to limit it to...
Well, what's the problem with having ten if there's no limit?
This is why I wanted to check in with you tonight.
There's something, you gotta, you gotta address it whether today, tonight, or next week, it will come up again.
What I'll do, and it may not be next month, because I may, I may, you may get this other case in here for next month, but for some meeting in the future, I will bring you a couple of little minor draft uh, blurbs to consider, just to get this language cleaned up a little bit better. Um, and again, this is why I wanted to check in with you tonight, because it's like, so it's y'all that can keep me from falling off the ledge sometimes.
Well, the ultimate is enforcement, and regardless of what we decide, if you're the, you're the only hat wearing enforcement, you know, that, that's the deal. And even though that should be a consideration, the, the, we won't hurt going out here and making sure this is a true hardship, and do we trust his judgment?
I, I guarantee you, you get lied to all the time in this position. I mean, it, there, very rarely are you in a, in a deep enforcement situation and not hearing some kind of, it's always a sob story, very rarely, but not a sob story.
Right, nobody's going in and breaking a law or doing something illegal, so they take it to jail or fine me or do whatever you want to do, but nobody can say, I don't...
It just could be a matter of, they're just like your mom from somewhere, just living in it.
But, but I can't say that if we do not address it, it's gonna certainly get worse, because we know how the world changes. Only, only changing is the time, of the time that you stay in there, straighten out, take me four times in a row. I think they're playing up like a bitch.
Yeah, and that's, as I go forward with this, this is, since it started, we're seeing it more often. It's becoming a phenomenon because of the housing issues. We see what's happening with rents and affordable housing issues and all the things. Um, it's gonna happen more, so this is kinda where I needed the bolstering of the planning board, and ultimately when I get in front of council with this, so that when I inevitably have to do enforcement letters to people, I can firmly say that, you know, this is not just me making these rules, that it's, we have, we recently took this issue back to the boards and, you know, standing firm on this.
Yeah, this is probably becoming an issue, I mean, Asheville's got national attention right now, over a hundred and twenty thousand pounds of cars lives at a homeless site. And it's not, and I, I got on computer, I'm looking, and they're talking about this on the west coast, where this is the worst of the situation, and they're talking about Asheville. And I'm thinking, so it's not gonna go away?
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of people living in New Orleans.
Yeah, I'm getting, I'm getting a rock a hundred red spirits.
A lot of people in New Orleans.
It's unfortunate, a lot of these issues overlap, and like I was talking to Theresa earlier about how the, the RV, this RV issue on our little tiny local level blends in with the homelessness issue, because it's heartbreaking.
It's, it's...
You're, I'm speaking first hand, homeless, you know, facilities I've got out right now, we have to negotiate these off on the interstate next, because they're all too noisy. You get out of your local interstate, you're ever, so when it comes to this camper situation, it's gonna get worse.
Yeah.
And certainly the things that we hope doesn't happen, like the two mobile homes, we have to address regardless of whether it's a, I mean, it's maybe just one example now, but it, it's something that if we don't do something now, we're gonna in the future look back.
I will add that this one case I'm working on right now is in our ETJ, which just does the mapping for people, confirmed that guy.
ETJ, it's a mess. Well, if I get rid of them, I think, it's, we have to do to...
It's a mess.
Yeah, eliminate, that's part of, a, a sneaky way to annex, is actually all it was, was a way for counties to get a tow in the door so they could annex, and that's not useful anymore. It's certainly not...
I, I just never, never been a huge fan of, of ETJs in principle, and especially when the county has something, you know, so, um, I know that Henderson County didn't always have the zoning that it's got now, and that, that's the basis for establishing the ETJ, is that a town can exercise it when there's no county zoning. So that's when, a couple of you will remember when we built our ETJ. But, um, it just renders people subject to your rules and regulations, so you don't get the tax base from it, so...
A lot of people in the ETJ were kicking and screaming, I wish they had a stronger voice today, because it really is not beneficial. Has anybody else on the board going to do anything to add, or discuss some, uh, RVs?
Yes, thirty days, even if you screw it up, would that actually solve the issue? I'm a little worried about enforcement in small town, you know, how do you know? They say, I moved out for two weeks, and I wasn't here, all neighbors and that.
It, it's next to impossible, I mean, it...
Unless you've got a neighbor taking pictures, guys.
I mean, whether it's thirty consecutive days or thirty days periods that run four back to back, or, you know, it means that I'm gonna have to like, you, and unless you get a complaint about an RV, you don't even know when it got moved in, and when it goes out for that period, you're only really jumping to respond to a complaint when, whether it's a legit complaint or a petty neighborhood dispute that leads over from other issues. I don't know what the source of this particular complaint was, but I don't know what the answer is, I don't know what other jurisdictions do, um, it's a tricky...
So Waynesville banned them altogether, so, so there is no buts and ifs, because we go by the building code, so the building code's...
So you don't even have a temporary period at all?
Yeah, we don't care how long, because then we get this arbitration, well, I was out yesterday, so it's pretty long. So we banned them altogether.
And that's one of the points, the, the one that allows a temporary at anywhere you've got a building permit to build a house or whatever, um, I, I want to make sure that we address that, because you can get a building from that, I've had one that was fifteen years old.
And then people keep renewing, yeah.
Yeah, you can renew it.
We know of a situation where a house burned down, and a family was limited to campers over a couple of, two or three year period while they had insurance battles and whatnot, and the property became a nightmare of belongings and...
Should I have best addressed your building permit?
Pardon?
Don't you have best addressed your building permit? They only have, sorry, destruction within the area of your car.
They, I don't know how the county handles it, they were able to keep basically extending their building permit, so, with the county. Um, so that's the other approach, is that I don't know, and I'm trying, I can't think back to when we were taking this to council the first time. I know it was a tricky issue then, and we landed on the ordinance that we have now, knowing that it wasn't gonna be perfect. Um, I mean, you could have decided to recommend banning it altogether. Um, I don't think, if I'm bad, I just told you my gut feeling is I don't think council would go that route to totally ban it.
Well, I take one of the angles that you used was, it can't have power, you know, and it can't have sewer, and people will live in a box, it, it, just these limitations, though, it becomes, it's not got power and sewer and water, that's not gonna keep them from using it as a residence. I mean, you can, you can stay in one without those things, and it's not a, a good litmus or a standard to consider whether it's got CO blocks, and if you don't have water, don't leave any space.
Yeah, I have a question on your thirty days, is that thirty days physically on site, then it has to be removed for X amount of days?
That'd be my interpretation on it, but they, you get into some weird situations where, I'm trying to think of another, there's another example where, I mean, people own mobile home or campers and RVs, they are a vehicle, it's licensed tag, they can get in the car, go drive and smoke, and then, and then come home and park it as a vehicle. Um, I, a situation where I know of where someone has it parked in their yard, and they go out of their house and sit in it and do work in it. Is it being lived in? It's like, they have, they have, they're, you know, I'm keeping it hooked up for power because I'm not gonna let the pipes freeze, you know, so it, it's like, so this is just a situation where it's somebody's personal RV in their driveway, they're not living in it, they go out and do work in it during the day and have pipes hooked up to it to keep the water running, to keep the pipes freezing, so again, it's like all that, like...
There's just a reason nobody else has an ordinance, there's a reason, but you've got to do something.
Enforcement nightmare, and I was looking for consensus, I mean, it sounds like the consensus initially was break up the thirty day periods, which we all agree is an enforcement nightmare. I don't know if there's consensus or not to ban it altogether.
What, what, are there some jurisdictions that, I mean, completely ban RVs from being even parked in, in residential drivers?
I don't know about that, that would get more into HOA stuff, like there are homeowner associations that say, you can't have it in your neighborhood, and we don't, we don't deal with that.
Our association's taking those numbers to seventy-two hours, and we go.
Right.
You know, if it's not, if it's not HOA...
But outside, outside of HOAs, is there...
No, that would be no ways, it's a constitutional test.
Right, I'm just asking a question, I mean, the other, the other thing is, you know, if you figure, uh, this thirty day issue, I mean, if it's a, if, the, the reality is, if somebody's gonna live in a mobile home or a camper, you know, because of a hardship type situation, so what if you did something like sixty days in any one year type of thing?
It's, any number of ways you can do it, it's again, who's keeping the clock? If you start doing it, because it doesn't require...
And who enforces it, I mean, how, how's it enforced?
Exactly. It's, I'm like, no, it's like, the, the couple of times I've ran someone out, like, you know, it's been a matter of, you know, the neighborhood, neighborhood complaint, you send a letter, we start with a contact letter, educate them about the ordinance, if they ignore it, you send a notice of violation, I mean, the vast majority, I mean, well, when I say vast majority, there's only been a handful of cases in town since twenty sixteen, seventeen, when these got enacted. We're just starting to see, I'm, I'm seeing this happening more often in areas where we're not getting complaints about it, and I'm like, oh, why can't we get a complaint about that?
Well, what, what happens in Waynesville, if you banned them all, how, I mean, there's an enforcement issue there. If somebody lives in a camper, what do you, what does Waynesville...
Oh, yeah, there's enforcement, yeah, we have code enforcement, we call police officers, I sometimes go close and help something, but it's mostly code enforcement, they're very strict. Maybe go aside, I mean, until you have so many days, you have to be out.
I mean, that's the cleanest way to do it, if you, if you ban it all together, then, then it's pretty, it's pretty clear, right?
It's just a climate there, but it's, yeah, and it works, over there.
So what you're saying is your thirty day law starts, I mean, you give them physical...
I'm not proposing to ban them, I'm just commenting on what Waynesville does, yeah, I'm not proposing to ban them.
Because now you've proved, I told you, there's thirty days left in the day.
Is that, is that what Waynesville does?
I'm not sure what days they do specifically, but they go, and they pretty much tell, you know, you have to be out, yeah, usually we give them thirty days, and there's no question thus, because building inspectors usually go with the code enforcement and explain that in Waynesville, strictly go by building code, you cannot use it as a residence. Campgrounds are not permitted anywhere in the district, oh, very much.
Let me, let me say a word to that, because I'm laughing, because I wish, and then Theresa, I know how to comment. Um, I wish that's the way it worked here, because way back before we had our own rules, and one of the things that led us to finally getting some verbiage in our ordinance about this, we always used to hear that building code does not allow occupancy of an RV. We would learn of these situations, we'd let the county know, you know, we'd get complaints about them, and we'd tell people, well, we don't have an ordinance about it, you need to call the county, because we knew that building code does not allow occupancy. The county would say, well, that's a local municipal matter, and it wouldn't delve into it. And so finally, we brought this issue forward on the planning board, and after however we wrangled it, we ended up with what's in the ordinance now. And I would love for Henderson County to be as involved with this issue, and it sounds like the building code folks are in Waynesville, but, uh, anyway, Theresa will have time.
Oh, specifically if you have spent any amount of time in a camper or RV, and you get somebody that comes to your property, and they're sitting there for sixty days or thirty days, and you haven't set up a power pole for them or septic tank for them, you know that's self-contained, but it's gonna fill up, so where's that stuff gonna go when it's filled up?
To be...
Like, it makes an environmental concern, and I've learned to add the, the...
A lot of people, they're ahead of that curve a little bit, they, they don't go in the camper, like go somewhere else.
Well, they'll have, yeah, they need to be like a...
Whether it's in a house or in the woods.
Or they get permission from the person they're staying with, yeah, or woods.
And, and that's a consideration, if there's no other facility available, uh, you gotta wonder where they're going, so...
Right, that's why, you know, brothers like, they got a dump station there, people, when they leave, they dump.
But you can't dump a camper without taking it to the dumpster, I mean, you could, but I wouldn't.
For what I would be, if you wanna set up a RV permanently, it has to be put to a septic tank.
So go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead. Well, as I said, it's almost sounds like until we get a complaint, then we have a timestamp for where we can set our days moving forward, and we're just paddling in the water.
That's largely basic, but usually I start, I can only start the clock when I know it's there for this issue, you know, we've seen it in the field, and...
But, but just going back to this whole thing with enforcement, so if we just ban, like what Waynesville does, then how, and you're saying that the county wouldn't enforce it?
They would, it would, since we're talking right now under our zoning code, it would be me, you know?
So the county won't...
The county won't protect, they won't help us with our...
They would go back to... They would go back to you, so it's still, is it enforcement issue?
Exactly.
Whether we ban them, or whether it's thirty days, or whatever it is, it's still.
And again, you know, that's like, you know, as we grow, you know, someday we'll staff up to a level where we have like planning broken off from zoning, and, you know, maybe the zoning person will become the chief code enforcement official or. That's been the problem with our size, it's like, we deal with, I always say, a volume of subject matter, not so much a volume of cases. But it's just, you jump around from one thing to the other, so you can't have full time people in all these different specialties. So, and the camper issue is like, as you see, it's crusty by which way you do it, and when you don't have the vacuum of building inspections to bang up with the building code. You know, it's like, we, well, what would end up happening is we would get into this way more often and have all the town attorney way more often to go after them, you know, for an injunction or something similar to that.
I'd still recline, I'd just ban them. Because that's such the cleanest way to do it, because then, you know, if you do thirty days or whatever, it still, it opens that window to, oh, we can do it thirty days, why can't we do it sixty days? You know, why can't I move out for one day, and now I'm back in for another thirty days? I mean, banning it just makes it, if it's an enforcement issue, no matter how you cut it, you ban them, if you get a complaint, you, it's clean, it's.
We're gonna do it. But just so I can clarify, when you say ban, you're talking about the occupancy.
Yeah, they can't live in it.
There we go, I just want to make sure I was.
Yeah, that's, that's a dilemma that comes, it will be complaint driven, and then the complainter or complaintee will have to prove their case. Each son will have to prove wasn't in it, he wasn't, I've got pictures, or I've got proof, you know, it will be.
But that's the case whether it's zero days or thirty days, I mean, at least.
And I think the rationale, like, again, we have had some turnover in council, like, I don't know that we talked specifically about banning it all together when we went to council with this, but I think there was interest in like that, that question of, okay, what happens when my son Johnny drives into town and wants to park his camper, and he stays in two weeks, and he's just parked in our driveway, so.
Yeah, it's motorhomes.
So that's why they left that, that's why that got created for that up to thirty day period, and up to four times a year. So, you know, again, this is not a crisis point, as far as like, we're not seeing these cases weekly.
I think one of the problems also lies in something I mentioned earlier about this case, is categorizing. Fifth wheels, motorhomes, RVs, travel craves, all as one thing, and it's really not, a motorhome is completely.
It essentially is the same thing, I mean, the camper intersection speaks to campers, RVs, fifth wheel homes, anyway.
If somebody, if somebody's got a travel trailer, it won't be, it won't be, it'll be tagged, but it won't be licensed like a motorhome, which, it's a different category, if somebody brings a motorhome and they won't stay at their daughter or son's home for a week or two, is they gonna be categorized like somebody that's got a motorhome that's never had a.
The neighbors that are complaining about it aren't gonna categorize as one different.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, how can you put them all in one bar, and it's being the same? It's so easy to live illegally in a travel trailer, but not so much a motorhome, because you can't just put them anywhere, they got a big license taken legally. You can't just drag them behind the building, but.
So what would you all like to see in the future, the droughts?
I'd say a three day workshop.
You can see how this, this idea could be a circle.
Somebody, that was what we're doing, because I sort of, I would come.
We could table this motion until the year twenty twenty six.
What are you gonna do when there's a hardship case, is probably on the phone, and you're just gonna say, it's.
It's problematic, when I get into the podium in front of y'all, I can see things way more objectively when you're on the phone or in person with someone on a day to day basis, and it's, God, it's tough. And I, granted, I know, I'm gullible, and I can be taken advantage of easily, but there are times I know when the hardship story is real or not.
You can add it.
There's one, this one I'm dealing with now, is like, oh my God, we're getting different kind of zoning questions from this party, like every other week, about what's going on, they have.
We'd be very clever, I'll guarantee you one thing, regardless of what we decide, you'll find a loophole to help a hardship case, if there's one there to be found, he'll get it.
I think what you had mentioned, are you ever gonna bring up a few scenarios for us to look at?
We'll work on it, it's probably not gonna be next month, but next month, and I'll say it again in the last sentence, just, we're anticipating for a satellite parcel down past the interstate, just at the corner of Naples Road twenty five, we're anticipating a submittals for a new convenience store. Sheets, if you're familiar with that brand. It's a used fire item, not subject to much as far as a review from you guys, you know, but I think they're gonna be requesting a fee in lieu of on the sidewalk, which is required to come to the planning board.
Not the entire sidewalk.
Not, we'll see, I haven't got a site, I give, but what the discussion is, is the sidewalk on a part of the, on the Naples Road frontage. And then separately from that, I teased the possibility of, since they're talking about, it's a very unusual zoning situation, it's gonna lead to this, but the property down there is on C one, even though it's down there near the interstate, which most of the preexisting satellite parcels down there is on C two, which is interstate commercial. That has a larger allowance for signage, like the big tall high rise freestanding signs that you can see from the interstate. Since that property got down to C one years ago, largely due to the desire to keep adult uses out, because they didn't want the possibility of a strip club being built on a vacant lot.
There are no much courts.
Very, so basically, they're gonna be coming to request variances on signage, and there's some precedent on a couple of the other parcels down that way. So, but I'll be talking with Joe about that, we, variances, we're not, we're not gonna be giving you all the details, I probably just said too much, so. Pretend, don't, you know, don't make up your minds tonight.
No, but you said sheets, correct?
Sheets.
Yeah, they're, they got there to be a briefing.
So that'll be potentially next month, so.
One other option that we had discussed, if you want to ignore the stuff on the RVs, is there any way to remove what's already there in the ordinance?
And go back to being.
Go back to being, no, no, nothing, I love that.
I love y'all forever, but I don't know if I'm gonna get away with that.
Yeah, I mean, there's gotta be a way to address it, so.
Ultimately, when the ordinance amendment, the council has approved and might have your desire.
What I was thinking, maybe you can give us some time, as long as we can, so I would like to do some research with other jurisdictions and do, and just bring some examples to the board, and then we can all see, maybe we'll like something, maybe you'll say it's all trash down here, so, but just some examples would be good from jurisdictions all over.
Well, it has to be local jurisdiction example from anywhere, because nobody wants to talk about it.
I'm sure we can with North Carolina, because of last season, and stuff like that, and, yeah, but, yeah, we have to do that.
And I would love to raise, Therese, I have a folder from when we did the research a few years ago with jurisdictions, and again, there were quite a few, but I would love to, there's, I would love to hear more about how y'all are doing it, and anything.
Yeah, I'll do more research and see if anything's changed.
Even just in, I mean, I had Therese looking for like hardship, like anybody that like goes the opposite direction and makes it easier for people to live in campers than nothing. And then today I'm reading about, you know, separate from the R V issue, like jurisdictions that are just prohibiting living in tents, which, that's got nothing to do with zoning. I thought I said internally here, I've had people trying to get me to help run people out of the woods, saying it's a camp. I'm not.
You can't have a tent.
Well, this time of year, you can definitely see where they're living.
I am not treating homelessness as a zoning issue.
Yeah, we can't, you can't put a tent up in your garden or barn, because the homeless people, that's the way they get rid of it, there's no tents. So nobody can put a tent for the kids in the backyard, no tents.
We'll have a brainstorm, I don't intend to bring you any draft language next month, so if you, yeah, if you want to bring, we'll maybe bring, we'll see how much time we have. It's not a compressing issue, I've got a couple of hidden cases that I just need to be less nice with, so I'm gonna say that.
So the next one's on the twenty first?
Yes, February twenty first.
Know any other updates that you want to discuss? All right, is there anything else the board wants to discuss, talk about, or complain about, or do you want a adjourn? And will adjourn on your census? Be adjourned.